Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I would like to call to order the July 6, 2022, City Council meeting. Let the record reflect that all City Council members, with the exception of Vice Mayor Carey, are present, and all city officials are in the building. Vice Mayor Carey is on medical leave today. She had some surgery yesterday, so we're wishing her very well. If you would please stand and join me for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, just two days ago, we celebrated the 246th birthday of our great nation. It was founded upon being one nation under God. You have truly blessed us. Father, we have fallen short so many times, but You continue to love us. Lord, we pray that the divisions in our country be healed. We know that this nation needs to turn back to You, and You will do the rest. Father, in Your Word, in 2 Chronicles 7:14, it says, "If my people, who are called by My name, shall humble themselves and pray, seek My face and turn from their wicked ways; then I will hear them from heaven, I will forgive their sin, and I will heal their land." Lord, we pray that the decisions that the council makes today be pleasing to You and the people of Punta Gorda, and all God's people said, amen.
Thank you, Carla. Okay, our next meeting will be next Wednesday, July 13. This is a specially scheduled meeting because of our summer break, and this will be the last meeting that will be held in the City Council chamber. When we reconvene on August 24, we will be at the Military Heritage Museum for all future meetings for the immediate future. Is there any -- anyone have any changes to the agenda that need to be done before we start? Okay. We have no proclamations. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide input to the council on any subject, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jeff Lustig. I just wanted to thank the Punta Gorda Police Department for doing an excellent job of maintaining order on this weekend's protests. There'll be many protests in the future. It's hard to believe that women don't have equal rights. You're not granted by the Constitution. We have to pass the Equal Rights Amendment that still hasn't been ratified. I remember a time when women routinely disparaged from work because of pregnancy issues that the corporations didn't want to pay for their health care. And there'll be many other kinds of things that will get people upset to have their voices heard. And to keep order is a very important thing, and they did a great job. November's coming soon. We have to make a decision on the code. I implore people to go to the Justice Center and look at the fifth floor, look at our beautiful city, to imagine what it would be like to have buildings, commercial buildings, that could be used for apartments and parking. It can give you very good ideas on how to see our beautiful city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary Skilicorn, a Punta Gorda resident. I was quite surprised today to see Agenda Item 6 Alpha, which was to propose a referendum for incentive tax benefits for potential development within the city. In fact, I noticed on that that it says, "No public hearing required" for that. I guess I'm kind of astounded, something as significant as that, no public hearing required. I was astounded. The core tenant strategy for Punta Gorda has been to transition the tax base from residential to commercial. Yet the first thing we're doing is to provide tax incentives for development for those developers, for those companies, for those businesses that are either new or even existing. Something's wrong here. We're going from one end to the other on it. And I guess we're, not only that, but we're allowing the drive for tax, or not tax incentives, tax income, to drive decisions that we're making. Increases in tax revenues are driving our decisions, building height, density, annexations, extended water and sewer beyond Punta Gorda boundaries, providing parking to meet developers' requirements, and now we're looking at tax incentives for maybe those same developers. Shame on us. Yes, I understand that there is motivation, or the logic is, you give them incentive, you bring them in town, and then there'll be tax revenues from there on out. But it sends the wrong message, that I think, to be providing tax incentives. Are we really that desperate for new tax revenue when we can approve a $10 million City Hall building renovation, which I view is more as want rather than need? And I guess maybe just one last measure. Don't measure your success in public service by the amount of development that you've brought in. Measure it by the increase in quality of life through your actions to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There was an error on the originally published agenda with respect to the ordinance that Mr. Skilicorn was referring to. And I think the agenda was amended yesterday afternoon. I'm just wondering if the City Council got a copy of that. But the main, the change was that the public hearing, the item, the ordinance, first reading with respect to the economic development tax exemption is indeed a public hearing, and the first reading this morning will be subject to public comment.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council on any issue? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. If there's anyone in the audience that has submitted a resume to be considered as a Board or Committee person, would you please come to the podium and introduce yourself? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn as City Council, and we reconvene as the CRA. Okay, we are in session as the CRA. Let the record reflect that all commissioners, with the exemption of Vice Mayor Carey and Commissioner Dryberg, are present, and Mr. -- well, would you, first of all, would you citizen comments? If there are, is anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission on any issues on the CRA agenda, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting of June 1.
Move approval of our meetings of June 1.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the June 1, 2022, meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And next, we have the CRA Project Status Report. Mr. Murray.
Yes, thank you. First, we'll talk about the municipal marina activity. As you can see in the chart, June to June, last year to this year, we have slightly less annual rentals, semi-annuals, we still have two. The monthlies have increased, though. We're changing the demographic somewhat in the marina because of the livaboard requirements and livabords that are now moving out and converting some of those to waiting lists just this week. We got the consolidated waiting list again from the Marina Management Company, and we're meeting routinely so that we can take a look at that and see who's going to be moving into vacant slips, the vacant slips still need repaired, et cetera. So we do have 20 monthly for June 2020. The commercials are steady. Of course, we have all 14 of those slips allocated. We have 11 on the mooring balls, and right at present time, we have three true livabords that are still in the marina. The community room, of course, we're getting some consistent use out of that for outside agencies as well as city use. For the pump-out vessels, you can see that we had 2,600 gallons more than last year this time, but we had a lot less miles traveled. A lot of those were more local in the marina, especially some of the livaboard and other vessels that were moving to other moorings or locations, having them completely pumped so that they could move. Still 2,600 gallons that add to the quarterly report that's on the next page that shows for April, May, and June, for that quarter, how we had 425 vessels that were pumped, traveled 358 miles, and treated 10,360 gallons. So we had over 10,000 gallons that we took from vessels and helped protect the harbor with that service that's provided. So when we get to some of the keynote projects, we look at Historic City Hall rehabilitation. The consultant presented the three options, as you're aware, and discussed the project benefits of those options. Option 3 was approved. We now are looking towards the 60% plans with a construction manager at risk that's hired on our behalf for the project to work with the architect, to make sure that the project is value-engineered, and that any cost that can be cut or reduced, or at least not exceeded what was projected, are identified, so that we have a not-to-exceed maximum when it comes time to bring the project in for final approval. Gilchrist Park, the underground drainage is complete at Gilchrist and McGregor. We have some of the sidewalks that are nearing completion. We have electrical work, even FPL with their pole relocations that are ongoing. Demolition and grating of some of the new parking areas is moving along, even with the water that we've had, and some people called it Lake Gilchrist a couple times because of the amount of rain that caused large areas of ponding in the construction sites, but they've moved forward with it, took care of all those issues, made sure we had a good stable base, and moved forward with the project. A.C. Freeman House, of course, we've had the plans in on that. The grant application was approved for the $500,000, so that's, you know, a good start with that. But with that grant application and the amount of money that we had budgeted, the initial 60% plan projection was about 1.4 million. We were still 600,000 short of that, so we still have that 600 plus any cost escalation. So there was a meeting and several discussions with some of the historic groups and some facilitation to see if there are opportunities for additional grants and/or fundraising, and then, of course, what that would do to ultimate use of the structure. And all of that information is going to need to come back to City Council so that you can discuss ultimately what the use and funding scenarios may be and how you want to move forward with that. So at this point, until we have more information, nothing is proceeding with Freeman House except behind the scenes for funding and use discussions.
When do we anticipate getting that grant funding?
The grant funding that was just approved, I don't remember when that was available. I was thinking it was available in fiscal -- do you know, Joan wouldn't know, she's not here right now, unfortunately, but once it was approved, we go through the paperwork. So at least by October 1, it should be available, at the very latest. Government Center, we've had a project that has been on the books for quite some time. We've used the fencing, such as you see around the building now, to further fence off areas that we've had people ingress where it's not technically allowed or provided for, and we've had trip-and-fall issues, et cetera. So we're proceeding with that project that was approved to order and install the material. It's especially pertinent now because this area will become a construction site, and that helps prevent ingress into the site that shouldn't occur while we're in the process of construction. So that's moving forward as approved. And that's all the highlights for this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Murray?
None.
All right, thank you. Commissioner comments? Mr. Counsel?
No comments.
Mr. Cummings?
Ms. Lott.
Today.
Mr. Gaharsky?
No comments.
Okay, well, I guess there are no comments. So, being said, this meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene as City Council. Okay, we are back in session as City Council. The next item on our agenda is an ordinance.
Yes, this is a legislative ordinance, first reading, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, calling for and ordering a binding referendum election to be held in the City of Punta Gorda on November 8, 2022, relating to economic development ad valorem property tax exemptions for certain new businesses and certain expansions to existing businesses, providing for findings, providing for authorization to grant economic development ad valorem property tax exemptions, providing for a ballot question to determine whether a majority of the electors voting in such referendum are in favor of authorizing the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, to provide structured property tax incentives to new businesses and expansions of existing businesses that are expected to generate new ad valorem taxes or create jobs within the City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Requesting that the Charlotte County Supervisor of Elections conduct the election in accordance with the applicable laws and regulations, providing ballot language, directing that the notice of election be prepared and published, providing for severability, and providing effective date.
Would you like to expound on this, Mr. Murray?
Certainly. I'll give you the background of this and what it all means. Of course, this was one of the things that was discussed with the Charter Review Committee, and while they didn't feel it was appropriate to be in the charter because, especially in terms of the allowance of this exemption does not correspond with the six-year Charter Review, as well as other reasons, they did recommend that City Council discuss this as a separate ballot question. So what this does basically is give the City Council authority to use new ad valorem tax as an incentive or for economic development purposes. The county had actually had this on the ballot for referendum in 2010, and it passed. And in 2012, '13 range, City Council discussed several things regarding the ballot question that passed in the county that the city, of course, also voted on, and it was determined that the city could piggyback on that. Given that piggyback, the city implemented several economic development incentives at the time, using new ad valorem tax, including an annexation provision that allowed for the first two years to be at 50%. So you may remember, a couple years ago, there were some that came in that there was discussion about giving them the 50% reduction for the first two years because of that exemption. So that all was allowable up until August 24, 2020. So August 24, 2020, that 10-year period that this question is valid for from referendum expired. So checking with the county, the county did not put it back on the ballot for their own use, simply because they have other methods now, such as Dave Gammon and the economic development plans that they have and the other funding sources that they use for, you know, similar incentives, not directly from county government. So this is back on the agenda because the county, the city, lost that authority as of August 24, 2020. And if you so choose to put this on the ballot and it is approved, then you, once again, have the authority to discuss any incentives that you would like to see happen, which would then be generated per an ordinance that would go through the public hearing process, at which time you could determine what incentives were appropriate or what might help incentivize specific goals or objectives that you have, going through that public process again, so that you can have that ordinance in place if indeed you chose to use it. Without this, you just don't have the opportunity at all because it's now expired as of 2020. With it, you have the opportunity for further discussing in the future if you want to generate an ordinance that allows you to do such things.
Questions?
A couple questions. So just so I'm clear, this is not something new. This is something that the city has had for many years in the past. It just expired.
That's correct.
So does this ordinance then, is there an expiration date on this, or would this be a permanent change?
It's still the 10-year authority for the valid question for this specific ordinance.
Okay, so, and then anything, if this ordinance had passed, then anything that would come up would come before council to be discussed in public and voted on in public?
Well, actually, even more than that, you would have to create a program, like was done previously, for the annexation with the two-year 50% exemption for new taxes. So it's not something that takes away from the existing tax base, it's any new taxes generated. You would have to create a program, approve that, it would go through the public process. So this just gives you authority to do that in the future if you so choose, but it doesn't do anything on its own.
So it's completely transparent?
It is, yes. Thank you.
And just to be clear, this is a process that's provided for in Florida statutes. It's not just unique to Charlotte County or the City of Punta Gorda.
Melissa.
I had a question that was proposed to me. When you're talking about businesses, obviously, first thing you think about is commercial. But would a business be included, for example, affordable housing or any kind of residential that would want to be developed, would that at all come under the criteria of commercial or business?
I think that would depend a lot on how we define it in the ordinance, and I think that you can define it so that it could include developers providing for affordable housing.
So in a sense, then we could, if we so chose, to come up with something of an incentive if affordable housing, but obviously, then we would dictate what is considered affordable housing? Is that how that would work?
Yes, I mean, I think that it might be necessary to do a little bit more legal research to see what parameters have been explored and validated in the past, but it is certainly something that could be worth considering.
Thank you. How will this be monitored? And I mean, literally, there could be hundreds of projects that we could use this for. Are we going to designate a pot of money for this sort of thing, or how is it going to be applied and monitored?
This would actually not need a pot of money, simply because any incentive would be from future taxes that are an increase in the increment that's being paid. So if someone built a business on Jones Loop and you wanted to see that business area develop, and you came up with a program that said, "Anyone that develops adjacent to the city and can annex in," or whatever, "for businesses out on the periphery, have a 10% reduction for the first two years of new taxes they generate for the improvement," then they would get, they would still pay 90% of the new taxes for two years, and the third year, they'd pay 100%, and that would be the incentive. So this doesn't take existing monies or existing requirements and do anything with it. It's all based on future revenue of the city as an incentive to reduce, or if you wanted to see something constructed for economic development purposes, and in that development, they were not going to construct that. And you said, "If a development does X, Y, Z, they can get a 10% reduction on the new taxes for two years." Or, you know, the possibilities for the discussion are varied. I mean, you could do a lot of different things if you want to do within the parameters. For example, it wasn't ever intended for strictly residential, for example, single-family homes, or if you're building condos. Now, if they were a business entity that included residential, then, like David said, that might need some more legal review. But there's a lot of possibilities there that you had the opportunity to discuss before, even when the economic development incentive was already in place, and actually, it was still out on our website, that had been there when council originally approved it, based on the question the county had put on. But that's all expired now, and you don't even have the opportunity to discuss it if you want to.
So I guess my question is, and this was something that was asked in my group yesterday, if somebody comes in, let's just say we want to enter into a private-public partnership with a developer, we're not going to make up the difference in a, from a pot of money of the taxes that we would allow them to abate, so to speak. So in other words, if they came in and we gave them a tax incentive of 50% off for the first two years, the city doesn't have to make up that difference from a pot of money, is what's kind of the question?
That's correct.
Okay.
It just, it's part of your pro forma, your five-year plan.
It is.
Yeah.
Assumes, you know, so you're, yeah.
Will someone from staff be personally assigned to manage this type of a program if it goes in place?
And it was actually, previously, it was managed already, so it's just something that's expired, and now they don't have to do, but it would be put back in, and we would have that managed, just like the annexation initiatives or anything else.
Mark.
So when something like this gets put on the ballot, is there a, because this is, if you read all the detail behind this, it's very technical, legalese, is there a clear English statement that says, "A yes vote means this," and it's very clear and simple for the average person to understand?
Well, so for the benefit of those that may be watching, this would be the ballot question that's proposed by the ordinance. Shall the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, in order to have a broader range of tools to use in support of economic development, be authorized to grant pursuant to Article 7, Section 3 of Florida Constitution, structured property tax incentives to new businesses and expansions of existing businesses that are expected to generate new ad valorem taxes or create jobs within the city? So that's the ballot question, and yes for authority to grant, no against the authority to grant. And of course, we're limited in, by statute, as to how many words you can put into a ballot question, and so there's a fair amount of public education that would go in support of the question, and hopefully, as it was worded, it's clear enough so that somebody can make an intelligent decision.
And that public education is also part of the other ballot questions that are on there. The Charter Review Committee had recommended, so that all of that is one, basically, public education piece, so people completely understand what questions mean and what they're voting on.
Melissa.
So basically, just to be clear for everybody, we've had this option before. It has expired through the county. Today, really, all we're doing is deciding whether we want to give ourselves authority to move forward, and then from there, we would have to then define a plan as to what incentives we would have and go from there. So today, the only thing we're really deciding is if we would like to move forward with the type of package to be determined at a later date.
To put it on the ballot.
It has to be put on the ballot.
Put on the ballot, excuse me, yeah.
That's what the vote today would be, to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, to put it on the ballot and go from there.
Just to give you the authority to further discuss a plan if this is approved in November, if you even choose to further discuss a plan. It doesn't even mean you have to, but it does give you the ability if you want to.
Did you have any comments, Joe?
Just in support of this, I mean, ultimately, we don't want our residents to have to carry the tax burden for the city, and this is a tool we can do to help avoid that possibility in the future.
And I don't think this is going to be a free-for-all kind of a thing. It's going to have to be closely monitored and, you know, only used when necessary if there's an opportunity to do something we really want to have happen in the city, so. Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address council on this issue? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject?
Sometimes the problem, my name's Jeff Lustig. Sometimes the problems with these kinds of development, they hurt existing businesses because the new business receives a tax break. As somebody who was in a long-established business for 50 years, it made it very difficult when new buildings came in and I was under rent control, and they could put a market price and have a 10-year tax abatement for real estate taxes. So just be careful with how long you give these abatements for and how it affects, taking into consideration the existing businesses and property owners' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address council on this issue?
To close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance for the referendum item on this year's ballot for the economic development ad valorem property tax exemption. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next, we have a legislative ordinance.
Yes, and this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, relating to the calling for and ordering of a binding of a binding referendum to be held in the City of Puntagorda on November 8, 2022, to determine whether a majority of the electors voting in such referendum are in favor of certain proposed charter amendments proposed by the City of Puntagorda Charter Review Committee, requesting that the Charlotte County Supervisor of Elections conduct the election in accordance with the applicable laws and regulations, providing ballot language, directing that the notice of election be prepared and published, providing for inclusion in the charter, providing for severability, scribners' errors, and an effective date.
Okay. So, this is the compilation of all the things that the Charter Review Committee submitted to us, and we've already reviewed these. This is just to officially put the ordinance in place to support that.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the legislative ordinance for the Charter Review Committee findings. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next, we have consent agenda. Is anything on here anyone would like to pull? Okay, we didn't have a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next, we're on to Bel Air Court.
I can start the discussion. There's probably much more information that you'll want to discuss. But generally, Bel Air Court, it's had its ups and downs for quite some time until it became delinquent enough that it went basically for tax sale. Given that whole process that you go through, there were several challenges during the COVID era, et cetera, that prolonged this until the city was able to get full, clear title to the property. The city now has full, clear title to the property. And given that it is an asset of the city, that city council needs to determine how to dispose of that asset. And then, of course, there's funds that are generated from the disposal of that asset and where they could potentially go. So, right now, we know the house itself, and everyone has certainly heard plenty about that house and the property. And the city's been maintaining it with grass, hedges, trying to trim things up, keep it looking nicer, especially, you know, because it's going to be sold. We've had exterminators out there. The house itself still is as-is, where-is, needs a lot of work. We've tried to secure the envelope, and it's ready now for its next use in life, which may be demolition, it may be reconstruction, whatever someone determines is the proper method of disposal of that property.
Actually, just to clear the record, we acquired the property by way of foreclosure of code enforcement means that had been left unpaid. And it also was delinquent in taxes, but we were able to have our foreclosure action before the tax sale went into place. And I had some time ago rendered an opinion regarding what options the city has with respect to the disposal of surplus real property. And I'm just going to highlight what I found in 2010 and based on research I performed recently, have confirmed that it still is the case. Unlike statutory provisions relating to the sale of surplus state-owned property and sale and disposal of county-owned property, the Florida Attorney General has opined that in the absence of a charter provision or ordinance prescribing the procedures to be used in disposing of surplus municipal real property, the matter of disposing of such property is left to the discretion of the municipality's governing body, provided that such body acts in the best interest of the municipality. So, you have a full range of opportunities in which to explore with respect to this sale or other disposition of this property.
Mark?
I would just cut to the chase, and I think that this property is probably worth more without a house on it than with a house on it. And I would suggest that we just knock it down and clean it up and sell it as a vacant lot. The worst possible thing that could happen, I think, is that somebody buys this as a fire sale, slaps a coat of paint on it, and then puts another Airbnb in the neighborhood. That may be a little bit of an exaggeration, but the way to prevent that and to make sure that what goes there is going to be something commensurate with PGI would be to dispose of it by knocking it down and starting over.
I'm not inclined to spend any more money on the house. We've spent a lot of money on this house trying to get it to the, to the point where we are right now. And it is relatively secure at this point, to the extent that I don't think the roof is falling in anymore, and we've taken care of the extermination that needed to be done. We've done a lot of things to clean up the yard and get it to some point where it can be sold. And I think we should just put it on the market and sell it and to get what we can out of this. And I think right now is a good time to do that because the market is still very strong. And I think we can probably get a fairly good amount of money for it.
Yeah. I agree with the mayor that, you know, at this point, I think the city has done their obligation, and any developer or whomever's going to buy that property would understand, you know, and it's up to them what they'd like to do with the property at this point. So, I would put it for sale as-is and go from there.
I feel the same.
Okay. So, what's your pleasure? Do we want to?
Do we need to, I guess my question would be, you know, how do we assess what that price tag is? Is that something we define? Is it something that?
Well, again, that's, you have, you have the discretion of making that determination yourself by staff investigation and doing best guess. You can hire an agent that could do the work for you.
Doesn't it have to go through like the standard protocol of getting rid of additional property? Don't we have a formal program for that?
Well, there is a program for tangible property like trucks and things of that nature.
Okay.
But as I indicated, your options are completely open with respect to what you want to do with this real property, provided that ultimately you conclude that what you decide is in the best interest of the city.
May I ask, had we been in this situation before? And if so, what have we done in the past?
We haven't done that in all the years I've been on council, but that doesn't mean it hasn't been done.
I was just curious.
Lisa, would you like to comment? He's shaking her head now.
Lisa Hayden, zoning official, we had one that was in foreclosure, I believe it was 412 Allen Street.
Oh, yes, that's right, too.
I don't know if Mr. Levin remembers that one. I can't remember if we went through the procurement process of doing appraisals and then putting it out for bid. I would have to defer to our procurement department on that one.
I do remember that, no, Lisa.
I mean, personally, what I would like to see, I would like to see this handled just like anybody else would handle their own property, that we would, you know, whether it goes through procurement or whether we have a real estate, it's fine with me. But I do think we need to treat it just like it would be my own property and make sure we're getting market value for it. I don't want to see any type of auction or, you know, you know, best bid or, I just want to be, I want it to be treated as a property should be as far as, you know, I were to be selling my property.
I would agree with that if we don't have to go through an auction process because there, there's a lot of unknown fees that we would have to incur. So.
And procurement did add some information on comparables. Some of them are dated, so of course, property values have gone up substantially since some of these. But at the same time, you know what lots are going for right now and houses are going for in the area specifically. So, I guess a question would be what conditions can you put on a sale for that, I think? Can you put a minimum when we put it out?
I wouldn't say a minimum. I mean, it, here's our sales price, and you treat it just like anything else, and people come in with bids, and you go from there, just like I would if I sold my own house.
So, that's acceptable?
Yeah, clearly acceptable way to go.
And if, if we did it soon, I mean, while we're on summer break, if there was ever a need for the council to have an emergency meeting to discuss a potential sale, we could always even do that if we, if we needed to.
And then, we'll need to determine what that minimum would be as far, or not minimum, but what the sales price would be then if we're putting it out for sale.
With the way the market is going, houses don't last on the market more than a couple of weeks normally right now.
What we could do, since we do have one more meeting in July, is maybe we could, staff could put together what would be an expected sales price, and then the city council can authorize the city manager to accept an offer within a certain range of that recommendation.
That'd be fine, too, sure.
So, I would ask that we get a professional opinion on what the property is worth with the house on it and what the property is worth without a house on it. And I think for less than $25,000, we can do the community a great service by knocking it down. Or we could put a condition on the sale of the property that it is knocked down by whoever buys it. I don't think that people want to have that there. And again, the worst thing that can happen is that somebody buys this as a fire sale, does a minimal cleanup, and then we wind up with, with an Airbnb in the neighborhood. That's just not what, what people want. And I do believe, and this, this isn't about the house, this is just about the money and the funds and what, what it's worth. And I do believe that this is probably worth very close to the same, if not more, without a house on it than with a house. My opinion. And I get, I'm not a professional, I get a professional opinion.
I just think the city has to be very careful. Our obligation was to, you know, get it cleaned up. We're now in possession of this property, and it's our obligation to sell it. I don't think it's our obligation to see what, what's going to be the future of that property, you know? We have no obligation with that. At this point, it is in our possession. We sell it, and it's up to the purchaser to decide what they're going to do.
I would agree with that.
The other thing is we can't regulate short-term rentals anyway, as much as we want to.
Right. But we can regulate it by, by not having an opportunity to have a short-term rental there because you knock it down and somebody's not going to build something and put a short-term rental. They're going to put a nice house that's commensurate with the neighborhood.
Well, you don't.
That's what, that's what, somebody's not going to build a house and put an Airbnb there. But they could certainly buy a cheap house as a, as a fire sale and turn it into an Airbnb. And that's not really the reason for this. The reason is let's, let's get as much as we can for it, and let's get, beautify the neighborhood, get rid of that thing, make, make as much money on that as we can, and that might be without having a house on there. That's not uncommon. That's, that people will sell the house, knock it down, or sell the property after they've knocked down the property because they don't want that house.
Exactly. And I think that's what's going to happen, but I don't think we need to brunt that cost. I think anybody that's going to buy that property knows they're buying it for the land. They're going to knock it down. As you said, you're selling for less than $25,000. I've seen it happen all over PGI. They're going to knock it down and rebuild it.
But the way to guarantee that is for us to knock it down.
I don't think we need to guarantee it, though.
I don't, I don't want to see us get in the market of demoing houses. I think, I think that's the wrong path to go down.
I would, I would propose that we approve the sale based on if we can have some numbers definitive and a professional, I agree with Mark, a professional numbers by next council meeting, that we could then approve a figure with it as well, if that's appropriate.
I would agree with that. Okay, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to put together facts and figures on what the property may yield in a sale, and we will have that information to the council at the next meeting next week. All those in favor, please signify by saying.
To clarify, so we're not approving that we go ahead and sell it? We're just approving that we get a valuation of the property with and without a house on it? Is that what we're?
I, I personally am motioning that we get opinions to sell the property as-is, as it is, and come back with figures and go from there.
Joe, do you second that?
I, I second that because I'm just looking at, just without doing real, real comps, we're looking at fix something already for it as-is. But that's, that's just without going in with further investigation.
But to clarify, Mark, my motion did not include getting, getting quotes with and without. It's just as-is.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. So, is there any further discussion?
Discussion, just that we have seven days from today to get you a number, so we'll do our best to get a professional opinion on the value in that seven-day period.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries three to one. All right. Then we have a resolution?
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment in City of Puntagorda Lot Mowing Assessment District for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment and providing an effective date.
Good morning, Kristen Simiou, Finance Director. We do have one change to the resolution, and that's the date of the meeting. So, this one is for the lot mowing program, setting the tentative assessment for $235 and authorizing the property appraiser to include on the trim notice that goes out in August. We had our special budget meeting set for September 7th at 5:01 at the Military Heritage Museum. However, the county is doing their budget hearing on that same day, and they get first preference, so we will not be able to have that meeting on that day. They generally do a Monday or Tuesday meeting. I'm not sure what happened this year, but they are on a Wednesday. So, we are proposing September 12th. So, that's Monday, September 12th at 5:01 PM at the Military Heritage Museum located at 900 West Marion Avenue for the meeting.
I don't think I can be there because I have a meeting at the museum that day for the board. I think that's the day.
September 12th. So, Karen had sent the, sent them an email to find out what dates they have available. We originally were looking at the 6th, but they were not available on the 6th.
Why can we not have it at the same time as the county commission?
Because our residents are also part of the county, and they have to be able to have that opportunity to attend their meeting as well.
Okay, well, I can, I have a conflict on September 12th because that's the night of the board meeting of the Military Heritage Museum at the same exact time.
Let me see if Karen has any other alternative dates. She's out there.
And of course, it is at 5:01.
And my meeting is at 5:00, so.
Karen Smith, City Clerk. We did not talk to the museum about any other dates, so if you want to choose a couple of the dates that might be acceptable, I'll get with Isaac at the museum, and we'll see what's available.
Maybe this item should be tabled until next city council meeting?
Yes, I would believe that would be, that we need to do that.
So, we can do that. And then, the same issue will happen with the PGI and BSI, so we can bring those back to you on.
Okay.
Next Wednesday.
Do we need a motion to table?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion to table until next week.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this discussion item until the next council meeting, hopefully. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So, just a question maybe for you. So, we're tabling the discussion of the amounts and because of the date of the public hearing?
Yes.
But they could still discuss amounts and set the public hearing next week?
Yes. In other words, we're tabling this entire resolution, which would include the amounts until next week. Presuming that that doesn't screw up any deadlines that we have for adopting.
No, we have till next week to do that.
It might be helpful if the council members know ahead of time what the alternate date might be so we don't have this problem again.
I was just thinking about public hearing for the amounts themselves, and you might be here right now for that part.
Well, certainly, that's the prerogative of the city council if they want to, you know, piecemeal it and.
It's part and parcel of the, of the resolution.
Well, it is, except you could adopt the resolution subject to a change in the date, which would be considered next week.
Right. So, either way, it's okay, just so you know, that's an option.
What's your pleasure, guys?
I didn't know who was here for the public hearings, that's why.
Well, who knows how, what's going to be on the agenda next week? This looks like a pretty short agenda. I mean, we can.
The next one is short also.
Doesn't matter to me. I'm, I'm.
I'm, I'm okay with discussing it now and adopting the resolution with a date to be determined, if that's acceptable.
All right. Okay. All right. So, okay, so shall we void out our previous?
Yeah, move to take the matter off of the table and back on before the city council.
Okay.
Move the take off the table.
Second.
All right, so let's discuss the fees that we're, that we're planning on proposing for the assessment for the lot mowing program. Comments?
That was $235?
$235.
We're going up from $195 to $235.
$35, yes.
Still a huge bargain for anybody who owns a vacant parcel in the city.
I agree.
Part of the reason for the increase is because we have a certain level of fixed costs, correct? And as, as we have fewer and fewer empty lots, those fixed costs get spread over fewer and fewer lots, so hence, the price has to go up.
That is correct. And also, the contractor went up a lot more than, say, the estimated 5% for fiscal year 2022. And in the current environment, you know, we just are trying to be very conservative and make sure we have enough funds to cover that.
And basically, with the number of mowings that's specified and some trims, you're still looking at $15 per.
So we, what we'll need is a motion to adopt the tentative assessment rate and then add the clause about reviewing the date for the, for the public hearing on it?
With the date to be determined.
Because this means all of our public hearings for the budget will have to be on a different date, correct?
Correct, for the first, for the first public hearing, yes.
Okay.
I'll move, but I'm not 100% sure what I have to say, so.
Okay, so what you can do at this moment is adopt the tentative non-adverbal assessment rate that was just proposed, and table the remainder of the resolution until, continue discussion of the resolution until the next city council meeting.
So moved. Does that work?
You cheated on that. And do we have a second?
I think it works, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the tentative assessment rate of $235 per year per property for the lot mowing program, and we will continue this discussion for the public hearing date to be held sometime in September. Okay? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next we have a word of agreement.
Morning, Julie Roganstad of Procurement, for the record. I'm here for the award of agreement to Charter Machine Company of Metuchen, New Jersey. Procurement solicited requests for proposals for purchase of a filter belt press and skid dewatering system for the city's water treatment plan. Solicitation notices were sent to 336 vendors, 20 viewed the solicitation online, and city received two responses. The city-appointed evaluation selection committee evaluate the proposals based on technical specifications, equipment performance, warranty, and the pricing components. Charter Machine Company was ranked number one, and the ESC requested procurement move forward approval of the purchase. Delivery is anticipated within 168 days.
This was something that was budgeted, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, utilities, Sarah, it was budgeted, ma'am.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions?
Do you want to explain what it does?
No. We could do that one.
We talk about that each time, what it does.
Fascinating. I'll move to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to award the agreement to Charter Machine Company for purchase and delivery of filter belt press and skid dewatering system for the city's water treatment plant. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have discussion of littering.
Let me briefly kick this off by indicating the summary that's in the packet. Quoted language that I drafted is a legal opinion in April of 2015 as related to an issue that was occurring at that time, where there was people throwing bags with unwanted business cards to solicit businesses onto driveways. And we had had a number of other occurrences where unwanted newspapers or unwanted telephone books were thrown onto the driveway. And it was determined that there needed to be some means to address that, because particularly if it was done during the time of year when we have a lot of snowbirds out of town, there would be accumulation of these unwanted materials on driveways or yards, which kind of would tip off that maybe the houses were vacant. And so after doing the research, I concluded that there was a Florida statute addressing litter, and we ultimately amended our ordinance as related to public nuisances to adopt by reference the state statute on litter. The recent occurrence, which wasn't baggies and business cards, unfortunately, it was baggies and anti-Semitic rhetoric, caused concern and question as to whether, you know, how the city can address this. Clearly, as a member of the Jewish community, I find the language to be extremely offensive, but we don't have the authority under the Constitution, and clearly, as part of the work I did as part of the sign code, I'm very familiar with the limits of restriction of First Amendment rights. But throwing of anything, including anti-Semitic literature that was unwanted by the owner or occupant of the property, does constitute litter. And we have successfully prosecuted these cases before the city code enforcement board in the past, and suggested that this would be a way to try to address additional or future unwanted materials onto private properties. And I also understand that the police believe they know who was responsible for this activity, and anticipate that we'll have a meeting in the very near future with code enforcement and police department decide how to best handle it. But the recommendation will be presented to the city code enforcement board as a violation of the standards of litter in our code, and unrelated to the content of the materials that were provided, but again, to maintain the appearances of our neighborhoods.
So we do know who did this? Are we aware of the, who dropped these on people's driveways?
My understanding is, yes, we do. And in the past, when there was any information in the material themselves that would identify who the potential perpetrator was, we would file a case against that entity or person. And I don't know if the chief wants to comment, but apparently, we do have a suspect in this case.
Good morning, Chief Pam Davis with the Ponte Gorda Police Department. So yes, we do believe we know who did this. We don't have somebody that actually witnessed the throwing of the, these ridiculous things onto, you know, people's driveways and things like that. So the case is still being reviewed, we're still looking at it. And if we can get enough, we'll submit something to the state attorney. If it doesn't go to the criminal matter, then we will be working with the city attorney and code to find out if there's another avenue that we can address this.
Yeah, I won't speak for the state attorney with respect to whether there's enough evidence for criminal, but I can speak with respect to the city's code enforcement board. The burden of proving the violation before the code enforcement board, which is not a criminal proceeding, is substantially less than a criminal proceeding. Preponderance of the evidence is the only thing that we would really need to show, and if we have sufficient evidence or circumstantial evidence through the perpetrator was, we can treat this as a irreparable, irreversible violation. And each, each instance that we can document of having the materials placed on somebody's property with consent would constitute a separate violation with a fine of up to $5,000 per violation. So I would encourage anyone who has been a recipient of these materials that wants to let the city know that they're willing to testify at the code enforcement board would be helpful in being able to stop this.
So you're talking, each individual property owner would be able to have a separate case?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be, it would be one, no, it would be one, Mary, it would be one case that we would make, but, but as many different instances of the violation as we have people that would be complaining about it.
Let's hope they didn't all throw them away.
I didn't. You want this, you can submit that into evidence. So as offensive as this is, we do have an anti-solicitation ordinance on the books, correct?
Well, we do, but this wasn't solicitation. This was, this was speech.
Okay. So I'll just comment, and I mean, I think your approach is brilliant, because Al Capone didn't go to jail for murder, he went to jail for tax evasion. So if we can't get him one way, we'll get him another way. And you're right, $5,000 a clip. And I know on Tropicana, when I walked up and down the street, walking my dogs in the morning, that not everyone had one of these, but I would say the vast majority had these. And I know that it wasn't just on Tropicana, and speaking to others, that it was in other areas in that old sailboat section. So there are plenty of them. And it is litter, because the people that are gone, the snowbirds, these are sitting there, getting rained on and stepped on and mushed on, and it is, it's absolutely litter, so.
And I'll point out, as a result of a statutory change, I think it was last year, complaints cannot be anonymous. So if, all we need is one to make our point, but if others are willing to come forward and be a witness at the code enforcement, not anonymously, we have the capability of making a substantial economic point.
And not only that, so this was Saturday, all right? I got this on Sunday from Light Effects. It's also litter.
It would be, and I would suggest that, I presume that's a commercial endeavor.
Well, this person actually put who they were on here.
Yeah, so, so I would, I would treat.
So are we going to charge everybody with litter that throws advertisements or leaves?
Yes.
Political things?
Yes.
Whatever.
We've done that in the past, and we'll continue to do that, because that's how we enforce it.
Well, there is some case law that talks about littering being refuse, trash, things like that, not.
I've done, I've done the research, at least for code enforcement purposes, I'm satisfied that our ordinance provides the tools that we need.
For littering, but not for solicitation, correct?
Well, we have, the solicitation is totally different.
Right.
And, and to, there may be an opportunity to address that commercial solicitation in a different manner than the, than we are with respect to the speech, because we do have an ordinance addressing so, commercial solicitation. But even in that regard, in the past, we've been successful through code enforcement to treat that commercial solicitation as litter. I think it's a clear case.
Which would go before code enforcement, not necessarily have to involve.
It would not, well, the police department would be witnesses in the code enforcement case. They would not have to make a case in court.
Do we have a provision, I'm sorry, if you want to.
No, no.
Do we have a provision that, you know, if ABC Company throws a, you know, a piece of advertisement on a driveway, that we, we contact them and give them a warning first, and document that ABC's been warned, and then.
That's what we usually do. The police department will usually find out who did it, if we can, and give them a warning first. That has been the fast practice, for sure.
But that is within the discretion of the, of code enforcement as to how they want to treat the particular matter.
Mark?
So this was asked by my advisors yesterday, but is it possible that as code enforcement is driving around, when they see this kind of thing, because this happens frequently, that they see it laying on the driveway, can't they pick it up and make the claim at that point? I mean, does it have to be on the homeowners to actually, to file a claim or a violation?
If the code enforcement officers see it, then they don't need the testimony of the, well, they, I take that back. If they see it, part of the element of the case is going to be that it was unconceded to. So.
So they do need the homeowner. So they will need the homeowner to say that.
So homeowner would need to testify that they, that they did not allow this.
So, Colin.
And the reason, for example, to distinguish between someone who gets newspaper delivery because they subscribe to it, and someone who is, whose property is same newspaper, wants to try to expand their circulation by giving out a free newspaper, throws the same newspaper on property. The one where it was done by subscription would not be a violation, the one that was done without the subscription would be.
But, but code can't enter somebody's property without authority, correct?
Well.
Lisa's saying yes.
And that is true. You know, when you throw those small things, they probably don't go very far. So as long as it's in the city's right, the right-of-way, you know, that portion of the driveway that might be within the right-of-way, I think the city could do that.
They're not typically doing that. They're typically throwing it up the driveway, so it's not in the right-of-way.
So to be more accurate with respect to the answer to your question, if it's with, if it's, if it's lying in an area that the city code enforcement inspector has the capability of picking it up, they could do that, and if they wanted to make the case, they could confer with the property owner as to whether or not it was done pursuant to their consent. We, for, and the analogous situation somewhat is, you know, we have, we have prosecuted people that come into town to advertise an event at the civic center or whatever, by posting signs on streetlights and what have you. Code enforcement can get those, and we can make the case against the company that is sponsoring that, that event. So it's, you know, we need to make it a determination on a case-by-case basis as to, you know, what do we need to prove? Do we have that evidence? I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting that with respect to this most recent incident, if we have members of the public that want to come forward, we have the tool to deal with that through code enforcement.
Melissa?
I'm just curious. I understand why we're making this discussion because of what's happened, but normally, do we have a big problem with this? I mean, is it, is a lot of hours?
It's sporadic, but we will see it, particularly when the snowbirds are gone, and you'll get a call that there's bags and stuff, so. But generally, for the most part, like you said, we've been able to contact, usually they leave. It's not this, it's, they leave hard. So we're able to address it that way. This one, they actually did this in Venice. It was a couple of different cities. They kind of came down the West Coast and hit a couple of the cities.
But do you find that, you know, if ABC Company just did that, they didn't know, you give them a call, hey, don't do it again? You kind of find that it.
Yes, I usually don't see them repeating it.
Well, that's good. I was just curious for.
I mean, so is there a need to really to, especially the difference between litter and solicitation? Because it sounds like it's kind of muddied a little bit, the way we're discussing it. Well, with respect to this particular matter, it wasn't solicitation, it was free speech. Yeah, so I think we have, that's the point we have to make, is that if it's speech-based or if it's business, we have to separate those two, make it clear.
I don't think it's clearly defined, though, in our ordinance, is it, that it's not divided between?
If, if, based on our ordinance as it relates to solicitation, we couldn't make a case for a violation of the solicitation ordinance by virtue of what the materials were. They weren't soliciting, by our definition, it's soliciting business. I think it's pretty obvious they weren't soliciting business, they were expressing a political statement.
So the bottom line is, I mean, we do know who this was. Unlike what you've been hearing on TV news, you know, they don't know who this is.
We believe we do.
Great, great police work. We know who it is, and we're going to do something about it, right? So that's.
And I think we should.
Yeah, no, and I think that's, that's hats off to you guys, you've done a great job.
And another contributing factor, you showed the other solicitation, which is relatively small, compared to the baggy, you know, the material that was the anti-Semitic material. I think the city could use that also as a determinative factor as to why they might prosecute or handle one matter one way and the other, the other is more significant. Now, this approach is brilliant, the litter. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that the people who are doing the commercial solicitation aren't put in the box of litter unnecessarily. Well, we clearly have treated the unwanted solicitations as litter before the code enforcement board in the past. And that's why I'm recommending that we treat this matter the same fashion.
I think, I think we need to do whatever we can to take care of this and get this to stop, at least. This is not just the City of Ponte Gorda that's experiencing these types of flyers, by the way. It's been on the news quite a bit in the past couple of weeks. For purposes of clarification for the newer council members, Lisa, could you please send the council members the current ordinance that, that talks about all of this for both littering and solicitation, so that everybody has current, up-to-date information, and we're all on the same page, please? and we're all on the same page, please? Great, thank you. I think that would be helpful, too. But yes, let's, I, my opinion is, we should go ahead and do something about this with code enforcement.
Do we need to do a motion, or...
No, no, they'll have further discussion on this, so that they can define exactly where this has to go.
Okay.
Thanks.
And, and, yes, I just...
We want it.
I mean, you can always make a motion if you want.
Well, definitely in support of this action.
Yeah.
Well, it's still, we'll still need to evaluate the evidence that the police has. But this was more of a discussion item, to let you know that we do have a mechanism for dealing with unwanted tossing of things of any nature onto private property, and we treat it that way as well, assuming the evidence gives us that opportunity.
Okay, well, we have consensus that we want to pursue...
Yes.
Yes.
Whatever action we need to pursue on this.
This was a discussion to bring up the whole issue, so everyone's aware.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the travel reimbursement policy discussion.
Hello again. Karen Smith, City Clerk for the Record. So, what you have in your agenda materials is a draft of a travel policy based on council's discussion at the last meeting, as well as some additional input from the mayor. And this is, this is for your discussion.
So, we obviously had the preliminary part of this discussion a couple of weeks ago, but I felt that it was necessary for us to put in writing a new policy that addresses all of the things we've started talking about, and, and make sure that it's all concise and to the point, so we can put an ordinance or a resolution in place to, to cover all of this. And I thought it was extremely time-sensitive, because of the fact that most of us will be going to Hollywood next month, and we want to make sure that, no, no council member should have to be out of pocket any more than necessary for expenses incurred. And I think...
Hollywood, Florida.
I was just gonna say Hollywood, Florida.
Hollywood, Florida, yes.
Everybody does it, yeah.
Hollywood, Florida, which is over on the east coast of Florida, not, not on the west coast of California. But, but there were several things that Karen and I met a couple of times about this, and we talked about what needed to be included. We've covered the bases of allowances for local community events, like we talked about. We've covered, we've already approved the mileage change to the GSA rate. She's covered the travel expenses for meal reimbursement and other expenses that may be incurred. And I think we've covered a lot of bases, but we're looking for your comments and input, so that we can make this official.
So, by, just, just to kind of, so I can understand, so we put this in place, which defines a lot more, which I think is great. But at the end of the day, do we still have a budgeted amount per councilperson?
Well, that's what we're gonna talk about when we do the budget next week for the general fund.
And I, I think that's gonna help tremendously, because, you know, this is great to kind of direct council members, but at the end of the day, I think there should just be a limit, and this is what is budgeted. And you can choose what, you know, what different things you want to attend, knowing within that budget.
Right. Yeah, and that's, that's the plan.
Right, and the reason it wasn't put, there was no amount put in this policy, was to give you that flexibility when the, when you do the budget each year, to put an appropriate amount in there.
I'm a big supporter of that approach. I did that in my professional life. I think that's the way to do it.
Okay. Does anybody have anything that they would like to see changed, or modified, or anything? We really kind of tweaked this several times last week when we were working on it. And I thank Karen very much for drafting the policy. And what we also did was, we included appointed officials. That would mean Karen and Greg, if they so, travel for city business, because they're kind of the exceptions to the staff rules. So we, we made it so that it's for elected and appointed officials, so that it covered for them as well. Okay, so if everybody's in agreement, then we will have a formal resolution drafted for this.
At the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
All right. We will now adjourn as city council, and reconvene as the Burnsthor Isles Canal Maintenance District. Okay, we are now in session as the Burnsthor Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District. We have a resolution.
Yes, this is the, a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of annual special assessment for the Burnsthor Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, setting a date, time, and place of a public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment, and providing effective date.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kristen Simeone. So again, this is the resolution to set the tentative special assessment for the Burnsthor Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District at $860 per single-family residence, which represents an increase of $300 from this current year. And for all other properties, the assessment is .09 cents per square foot of land lying less than 120 lineal feet from the seawall. And again, we'll have to come back to you with a date for the meeting, but we can have discussion about the assessment rate.
Well, I just, this is, I'm confused between the two, BSI and PGI. I know the PGI one. What did the, the committee recommend as an increase? Was it 300, or is it more than that?
On the BSI, they, BSI had recommended a $300 increase, $200 towards the program, and $100 for their project. That will be spread over, and then they'll have an assessment for the loan to do that, that project.
So we're, in BSI, we're adopting what the committee recommended?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Could you also explain the .09 and 120 feet?
Yes. So basically, the standard, it's basically based on a standard lot, and so when the assessment district was set up, for non-single-family residential properties, they use the 120 lineal feet from the seawall. In our engineering department, in the canal maintenance districts, we work with them to determine what that area is. And then that, that's how it's presented on their tax bill.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we need a motion.
So similar to the previous lot mowing assessment issue, you can approve the assessment, but continue the ordinance until the next city council meeting, at which time a date certain can be established for the public hearing.
So moved.
So seconded.
Cheated again.
So seconded, okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the tentative assessment rate of additional $300 a year per property for Burnsthor Isles, and the public hearing date to be set next Wednesday at our next meeting, which will happen sometime in September. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are now adjourned as Burnsthor Isles Canal Maintenance District. We'll reconvene as Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance District.
Yes, and this is a resolution for your consideration, which I'll read by title only. A resolution adopting a tentative levy of special, of annual special assessment with Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, setting a date, time, and place of a public hearing to consider final adoption of the assessment, and providing effective date.
So again, Kristen Simeone, Finance Director. This resolution will set the tentative annual assessment for the PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment District at $950 per single-family, which represents an increase of $300 from the current year. And for all other properties, the assessment is .099 cents per square foot of land lying less than 120 lineal feet from the seawall. And again, we'll talk about setting the actual date at our next meeting.
Mark?
So in this case, the Canal Advisory Committee recommended a total of $1,200, an increase of 550. And in order to not shock residents too much, we decided to do 300, but that still leaves 250. So I think it's important, and I don't know how we do that. I don't know if that needs to be worded in the resolution, or somehow, but I think it's very important that people understand that we're doing 300 this year, and we will need to do at least 250 more next year. And it probably will be more, because the longer you wait, the higher the number goes. We did this last year. We only, the, the recommendation was for more, and we only approved $100 increase, and everybody was shocked when we came back with 300, and they're gonna be shocked again next year, when we, when we need to go even higher. So I think, I think we need to set the expectation right now, and I don't know how to do that. But it needs to be more than just talk. It needs to be somewhere, I know we're not approving the extra 250 today, but it needs to be very clear, so people aren't shocked again next year, when there's another increase, because it needs to be $1,200, not 950.
I mean, we can set the expectation in putting it into our pro forma, if you're okay with that, that we present at the, when we do our proposed budget. Also, we can make sure it is in the proposed budget message that comes out mid-August, if that's helpful. I don't know that you can put it in the resolution, because the resolution is for the specific year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where to put it, but to make it absolutely clear to people that, that we're, we're taking a half step this year in, in understanding that it's a big step to go to, to 550. But it's gonna have to be more next year. However we can do that, the more we can do that, you, you tell them once, you tell them twice, you tell them three times, they still don't get it, they don't hear it. You gotta keep, somehow, we need to make sure that message gets out there.
I don't, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I also want to be very careful of the fact that we don't want to be putting specific numbers out for future years, because we don't know how it's gonna fall into place with the budget, number one. But I, the day I had my petition signed, I had someone in my house practically in tears, because they, they're truly thinking they may have to sell their house, because of the increase in all the fees, whether it be school tax, the sheriff's department, the county tax, the city tax, the canal maintenance fees. They just were very, very stressed out about, about the whole thing, and actually had tears in their eyes. So I just want to be really careful that we're not throwing specific numbers out there for future years increases, because we don't know what it's gonna be exactly yet. And I also want to be careful that if we're increasing the fees, that we're able to keep up with the manufacturing of the seawall panels to coincide with that. I'm not in favor of banking money for future years, for it to be used in future years. I'm not a supporter of that. So I just want to be careful about that. Melissa?
I do like, in your other presentations, that we were looking at regardless BSI or PGI, that pro forma, I think, does say a lot. And you're looking at five, six, seven years, and you can see just how much, you know, we're gonna be short. So I think that's probably gonna be the best that we can do. I think, you know, we can go on the record and say that I personally don't think it's enough. Unfortunately, I do think we'll be back in the same boat next year. But at the time, you know, we've, we've done what we think is best, and, and we'll kind of go from there. But I think that pro forma's gonna probably be the best way to educate.
Yeah.
And just to, to profound on our pro formas, that's what the pro formas are there for. It is a planning tool. It's not set in stone. We have things that change daily, monthly, yearly, and we will make adjustments as the year comes on, and we get to that budget year.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Here we go again. So, make a motion to approve, see if I can do this. Make a motion to approve with the final, I don't have it, sorry.
The proposed tentative assessment, and continue the resolution to the next city council meeting, at which time the date of the public hearing will be established.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the tentative assessment rate of additional $300 per year per property, and we will set the public hearing date at next Wednesday's meeting, for sometime in September. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have City Clerk.
I was busy tippy-tapping away what you were talking about. Sorry. Okay, so few board and committee items. We still have two vacancies for alternates on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We still have the two alternates on the code enforcement board. We have two vacancies on utility advisory board. I thought we had an applicant, but it turns out they don't live in city limits, so we still have two vacancies. Next, we have under nominations for utility advisory board, Mr. Derek Rooney. His term expired on July 7. He is eligible for reappointment, or will expire July 7, excuse me. He's eligible for reappointment, and has expressed an interest in being reappointed. If you'd like to reappoint him, nominate and reappoint him by motion today, you can do that.
Motion to nominate and reappoint.
Second. Motion and a second to nominate and reappoint Derek Rooney to the utility advisory board. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Also, under nominations for the building board, we have two vacancies, Mr. Lawrence Godfritzsen and Mr. Thomas Thornberry. Their terms expire August the 2nd. They're both eligible for reappointment, and have expressed an interest in being reappointed. If you would like to nominate and appoint both for those, for each of their seats, you may do so by motion.
Nominate and appoint.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate and reappoint Lawrence Godfritzsen and Thomas Thornberry for the building board. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then the last thing I have is the, an appointment for the Punta Gorda Police Officers Pension Board. This is their fifth member. So we have two-member trustees on police, then we have two members that are appointed by council, and the fifth member is appointed by the board members themselves. Mr. Kibbers is the, is the member. He was the member before. They're just reappointing him, and this requires council's confirmation. So just a motion to confirm Mr. Kibbers' appointment by the board.
Move to confirm Mr. Kibbers.
Second.
Motion and two seconds to appoint Mr. Kibbers for reappointment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. City manager.
Thank you, and thank you for helping to move some of these things forward today. That helps us start to prepare for our budget hearings and such, and keep things flowing into our next meeting. You were actually seated as four boards today, so that's gotta be exhausting, back and forth between city council and three others. So thank you for that. And secondly, just as a comment, we're still discussing and managing substantial issues with personnel as far as coming and going. I read an article last night, actually, where it was dubbed "The Great Resignation", and instead of "The Great Depression", and how not only government agencies, but private companies are dealing with the same issues. So we're looking at what we can do to ensure that we can provide quality services, and continue to provide those consistently, and what that takes, so that we can attract and retain employees that have been valuable to the city, and are basically our backbone. And we'll be providing more information on that. Hopefully, next meeting, we can discuss that some, with some additional information. That's all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
City attorney.
Nothing further, thank you.
I have something for you. I have been getting a, a number of phone calls and emails from residents who passively aggressively want to offer their thoughts about something that's going on in the community related to code enforcement, but they don't want to submit their name. I know we have a state statute that we have to adhere to, and I understand that. But they were told, one particular person, I got a phone message yesterday, one particular person was very upset that, that they were told by someone on the city staff that we don't, we don't do code enforcement. We don't do code enforcement to the extent where we can go after someone if they're violating the city statute, or the state statute, unless they submit their name. But they weren't told the part about they have to submit their name. So they're very concerned that the city is not doing any code enforcement for things that are blatantly against our city code. And one example in this case was there is someone on a vac, who is using a vacant lot next door to their house, who are now using it for storage of a trailer, a boat, a pickup truck. And now other neighbors are using the parking lot for their stuff. And they're very distressed that it's turned into an excess vehicular parking lot of different kinds. And I'd like to know what can we do about that and why, why are, does it, does it take a city council member to report it? To have someone take action on it? Because this is really getting out of control. I can tell you, on my street, there's someone that routinely parks on the vacant lot, on a vacant lot next door to a house. There were two cars that were parking on a vacant lot for over three weeks on the street across the canal from me. And, you know, at what point do we not enforce code?
Well, we always enforce code when we're aware of the violation from observations of either, well, from code enforcement officers. It includes not only the code enforcement staff, but also the city police who are also code enforcement officers. And as a city prosecutor, I can tell you that, that we routinely bring cases against the storage of trailers, vehicles and other items on vacant property that is observed by code enforcement in their routine activities. There's a limited number of code enforcement officers. And so, you know, we are somewhat reliant upon citizen complaints. And until the legislature kind of changed the way we did business, it wasn't necessary for a citizen to give their name when they filed a complaint. But now it is. So we have to comply with the state law, but we continue to enforce the city's codes when, when they're aware of the violation.
And most people will, are reluctant to put their name forward. So they're, then they won't report something and it's a problem. It's a really big problem. So how do we get around this?
We try to get the law changed that allows us to accept routine, I mean, anonymous complaints. But I think Lisa may have another solution.
Well, Lisa, you're a zoning official. Our, our code officers are proactive. We're out on the streets every day. Again, we're limited on our number of code officers and our lot mowing coordinator. When we see it, they, they act on it. We have been receiving several calls about some outdoor storage and about some parking of commercial vehicles and the people don't want to give their name.
They will not.
And when they don't give their name, we cannot, by state statute, like Mr. Levin said, we cannot initiate that code case. But again, we're out there on the streets. We, we don't wait just for the phone calls to come in. Do we miss things? I'm sure we do. But if, if somebody else wants to be the complainant and get us names and numbers, we will be happy to take a look at it and we enforce the best we can.
And what I'm talking about in, in most cases is the overnight parking on the vacant lot. And that's, that's what's really gone kind of off the rails.
We need to know about that, but we, it's not a violation to park on a vacant lot unless it's between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. So then we defer that to the police department. We send emails to the police department when we are notified with a viable complainant name and telephone number as state statute makes us have. And then we send it to our police department and dispatch and they will go out and take a look at it. And they know that they have the, the discretion to write a citation or not.
But that, but that requires, because code officers are never going to see that because they're not working from 1:00 to 5:00. So that requires a citizen to come forward, state their name and make a complaint in order to have the police officer go out.
In order for code to notify the police that they need to go check that vacant lot overnight because we're receiving complaints about parking overnight. That is correct.
With, with the law the way it is now, what does that complainant's name, what happens with that? In other words, if I complain and you have a record that I'm the person, I mean, is that being shared with the person that they're?
If they ask, if they ask for it, we have to share it. It is a, it is a public record, yes.
Can somebody call their city council member and ask to complain? And then the city council member is the one that's calling?
That's what's happening. They're all calling me.
And since, I'll, I'll, I'll use the city manager maybe as an example.
Only call the city manager? Great. I'm just kidding.
If, if, if the city is aware of a problem that doesn't, if the city is aware of a problem, we bring that problem to code enforcement. And if the officer goes and does an inspection, it's the city initiating the complaint, not a citizen. And to the extent that the code enforcement officer can be the witness to the violation occurring and they're able to observe it, then it's not necessary for there to be a citizen witness. But some cases, particularly those that occur when our enforcement officers aren't out there, can only be witnessed and complaint driven by a resident. And those are the kinds of cases that the statute says we cannot take action.
I'm going to put something in my newsletter again this week about this because I, I continue to get calls every single week. And, and people are scared to put their name forward because they don't, they don't want to risk the repercussion that may occur from ratting out their neighbor. And it's a terrible law.
And rightly so, so.
I know, I know why it happened. I understand why it happened. But it's a terrible law for the most part for people who are trying to live in a nice community and they don't want to see that stuff sitting around in people's yards.
And if someone does call in and complain, we issue a citation to someone that doesn't necessarily say, hey, we got a complaint from your neighbor because you're doing this. It says, here's your code violation, needs to be corrected. Now, if they say, did someone complain? Then of course you have to say yes. And if they say, do you have a copy of who it was, that's where the name comes out.
Okay, thanks. We didn't get anywhere, did we? Okay. City clerk, I don't think she has anything else.
We talked about it a lot.
Yeah, we talked about it a lot. Okay, on my stuff, just a reminder that next week we have our, our last city council meeting before summer break in this room. And then when we come back in August, on August 24th, we will be meeting at the Military Heritage Museum. And for those who did not get to attend, we had a celebration of life ceremony for Marilyn Smith Mooney on Saturday. It was really, really nice. A lot of people went and spoke on her behalf and, and I was very honored to be part of that. But very nice sendoff for Marilyn, who we're going to miss terribly. She was a great lady. And that's all I have for the moment. Council members, Ja.
Nothing else.
Melissa?
Well, even though you just left the room, I'd reiterate my previous comments. I'd like to recognize our city attorney for the creative way he addressed this littering question. And also to our police department for the fine work. I mean, you, you hear this all over the place on, on the news and we can't do anything, we can't do anything, we can't do anything. Well, here's little old Punta Gorda Police Department and guess what? We know who it is and we're going to do something about it. So I think that's, that's a testament to our great police force. So, thank you.
I, I agree with that. And I did get a lot of comments over the weekend about how great the traffic control was for all of the fireworks events over the weekend and that the police department kept everybody under control all weekend long for all the things that were happening in town. So we thank them for that. And the last thing on our agenda today is a short discussion on Florida Power and Light. And I also want to add to that Century Link. You guys all know, in my newsletter for the last, I don't know, 35, 40 weeks, we've been putting something in there about if you have a double pole in your yard, if you have loose wires, if you have anything going on with the FPL hardening project, to please report it to, to myself and Greg and please send photos. And I have literally received hundreds and hundreds of emails about this. And I continue to get complaints because FPL has stopped responding to us. There are approximately 100 double poles still up around the city. And Greg and I have had, I don't know how many conference calls with, with FPL about it. And they seem to have come to a screeching halt and they're not doing anything about removing the double poles. And people are getting really angry, sometimes to the point of yelling at me on the phone. And, you know, there's only so much I can do. We've, we've asked them to take care of this. They, they used to do reporting in with us every week. Then it went to biweekly and then it went to monthly. And now I think the last call we had was about two and a half, three months ago. And so that's, that's part of the problem. And Century Link has literally not responded to me at all. I've sent them four or five emails in the recent past and they don't even respond to me at all. They just don't even acknowledge that they got the email. A few weeks ago, we had, I guess it was two weeks ago, we had the pole leaning over at the History Park entrance to the, to the street that goes to the History Park. And FPL told somebody from the History Park that the pole belonged to Century, to Comcast. Comcast was contacted on a weekend and responded immediately, it's not our pole, it belongs to Century Link. And so, so then we got the city engineer involved and they sent an email to Century Link. And the Century Link said, no, it's not us, it's Comcast. It was like, it was just this free for all. Anyway, they did respond, Century Link did respond to the city engineer, but they did not respond to me, which is, in my opinion, disrespectful. But I think, I think we have to get something going to get this project moving and get these double poles removed that have been sitting there for well over a year now. And I would like your support if we, if we go forward and write a letter to the PUC and try to get this project moving again because people have been putting up with these double poles for a long time.
Can, can we pass an ordinance that makes it a code violation and then they can, we can fine them, daily fines if they don't? I mean, we.
Utility companies are autonomous to the city. They only report to the PUC. So that's, that's the issue. And FPL, the last time we talked about writing a letter to the PUC, before I even left the meeting, I had a phone message and an email from, from FPL. And I don't want to just throw threats out there. I think we need to be serious about this. People shouldn't have to put up with this. You know, this hardening project was started and then they kind of came, everything came to a screeching halt with part of the COVID situation. But they were pulling a pole here or a pole there. But I get, I, I'm not, I can't even tell you how many complaints I've received. And I just got two yesterday, the same thing. And then one of them also has a Century Link box that is cracked and broken and has been sitting there for several months that nobody's responded to me about. So if, I would like to ask if you guys would support writing a letter to the PUC on behalf of the entire city and the city council and, and get this moving again and get people on track. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Comcast is actually not doing a bad job when they're contacted.
Sorry?
Comcast is actually not doing a bad job when they're contacted.
Comcast has been phenomenal. Honestly, they answer almost immediately when I send an email to them and they go and clean wires up. And I have one from a city staff person this morning and I will report that as soon as I get home. But they're great. They, they immediately come out and they fix whatever I ask them to fix. I have no problems with Comcast and I'm very grateful for that. Because a lot of the wires were, were all Comcast wires, so.
They've actually turned around some Comcast.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and prepare letters then and get those sent.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And we have no further business, so we are adjourned.